Good evening, everyone. It's 6:05 PM. So we'll go ahead and get started with the joint public hearing for Douglas County. I'll start off by requesting that we stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Okay, so before we get started with the presentations, I just want to go over a few announcements. So thank you for coming tonight. My name is Dan Esch. I'm the Douglas County Clerk. This hearing is being streamed live on Douglas County's website, douglascounty-ne.gov, and it's also on, being televised on Cox Channel 18. There's an external defibrillator in the back of the room. There's an exit to my right in case of a medical emergency. There are bathrooms on this other, to my left, kind of around the corner. If anyone needs to use the restroom, there's also restrooms at the very end of the hallway by the elevators. And then we do have ASL interpreting services here in case anyone would need that. So the order of the hearing will be as follows. Representatives from each political subdivision will give a presentation about their proposed budget and proposed tax rate for next year. There are QR codes posted around the room, and that QR code basically contains a link to the presentations that will be reviewed this evening. We did provide hard copies as well, but if, and there still should be some out front there, but in case we're out and you want a hard copy, there's a sheet where you could put your name and email or mailing address on that, and then we'll send you the copies that you want. But again, there's a QR code posted at various spots around the chamber, and that'll take you to a webpage where the presentations are posted. After the presentations are done, we're going to turn the podium around so it's facing the dais, and then I'll open it up to the public comment period. I'll call up speakers from the public by the order in which they are listed on the sign-in sheet. So y'all should have had an opportunity to sign in as you entered the building, and that sign-in sheet, there was a checkbox if you wanted to speak. If you didn't do that, but you wanted to speak, you could just let Chief Deputy County Clerk Sandy Conley know. She's over here in the red, and she'll let me know that you were hoping to speak. Speakers from the public will be limited to two minutes, and we're doing that so we can ensure that we get through all the people who've requested to speak during the public comment period. There won't be a back-and-forth discussion between those at the podium and the representatives at the dais. There isn't any voting occurring this evening. The purpose of the joint public hearing is for these political subdivisions to provide presentations on their proposed budgets and proposed tax rates for next year, and then provide the public with an opportunity to comment on those proposed budgets and tax rates. After tonight's public hearing, these political subdivisions, and all political subdivisions, have until September 30th to adopt their budgets and tax rates for next year. For tonight's public hearing, there should be no items on the agenda other than a discussion on each political subdivision's budget presentation and property tax request, but during the public period, during the, excuse me, during the public comment period, there may be folks who will raise concerns about their property valuation, and I just want to make it clear that tonight's public hearing is not an opportunity to officially contest your 2024 property valuation, because those deadlines for this year have already passed. But out front, we did provide a handout that covers important dates for 2025 regarding property valuation. So it says important 2025 dates regarding property valuations at the top, and we're providing that just because we wanted to give people a timeline of the opportunities you have during 2025 to contest your property valuation. So that's all the announcements I have. I really appreciate your time and being here tonight, and we'll get started with the first presentation from Douglas County.
My name is Lori Persch. I am the Director of Finance for Douglas County, and I am here tonight to walk you through the Douglas County budget, just at a high level, for fiscal year 2425, and then our associated property tax ask and the tax levy. So our tax year runs, our fiscal year runs July 1 through June 30, which is why it's 2425, in case that's, it's not a calendar year. So to start with, let's kind of look at the breakout of the pool of property tax dollars. So when you, we have this pool of property tax dollars, and how is that broken out amongst the different political subdivisions? So in this instance, I have an individual here who is a resident of Douglas County within the city of Omaha and within the Omaha Public School District. These percentages would not vary dramatically if it was, you know, Millard or District 266 or some other school district. This is largely what the breakout looks at. So over, over half goes of your property tax dollars go to support your schools. In this case, 57.3% for Omaha Public Schools. The city of Omaha gets 21.5%, and then Douglas County gets 13.6% of your total property taxes to try to run the services that the county needs to provide to the citizens. There are some other smaller subdivisions that get the remaining 7.5% so that those subdivisions would be the Public Building Commission, the NRD, Metro Community College, the ESUs, and Metro Area Transit. So now, let's take a look at the tax rates levied for Douglas County. This chart here shows the last 10 years. As you can see, there has been only one instance of a tax increase, and that was in fiscal year 1920, so 2020. That was a specific targeted increase for the Juvenile Justice Center across the street, and the tax, it was a tax increase of a penny and a half. It was kept at that rate for four years, and then this current Board of County Commissioners lowered it, started to bring it down by a half cent this last fiscal year. The bar on the right is blue because that is actually a proposed tax rate. That is the one that we have in the budget, keeping it flat for the year. But as Dan mentioned, those are not finalized yet. They cannot vote on them until after this joint public hearing, although it does have to be decided on before the end of September, before September 30th. So on Tuesday, the 24th, at the next county board meeting is when they'll vote on that final tax levy for Douglas County, which again is that 13% of your total property tax bucket. This slide here shows the change in taxable valuation over the last 20 years. As you can see, there's quite a bit of ups and downs. There's a period there from 2011 to about 2015 where increases were 0 to 1%. Probably made it a little bit challenging for the county to pull a budget on those kind of increases. That was before my time. I've been in this role officially for a little over a year now. The last five or six years have been somewhere between 5 and 7% increases in valuation, although last year, of course, was kind of that record high of 12.2%. So we had a really big crowd here last year. This year, the assesses set the values, certified the values on August 20th, as they do every year, and it was a 7.46% increase over prior year. This is the part that I have to go through with you by statute at this meeting tonight that, well, I'll just walk through it. So at the top is the prior year property tax request, $188,319,485. The tax rate, as I had mentioned, was at 29.059 cents per $100 assessed value, which is where the commissioners had brought it back by a half penny. The certified taxable value in the prior year was 64.8 billion, and then in current year is 69.6 billion, so a 7.46% increase in that valuation base. So the property tax rate that would levy the same amount of property taxes as the prior year, meaning if we wanted to hit that top line again, that 188 million, would be 27.041 cents. However, we are holding the property tax rate flat, so it'll be the 29.059% is what we have it slated at right now. So that would bring in property taxes for Douglas County of $202,377,114. So that is, again, like I said, no change in the rate from year to year, from prior year to current year. This slide shows sources of revenue for operations supported by property tax. And the key here is operations. There are some other buckets that, of things that the county provides that are not property taxes, like roads and some other things like that, but this is the bulk of operations, so the general fund more or less. And as you can see, the biggest slice of that pie of the revenue that we get to provide things like 911, the sheriff, the correctional facility, the criminal prosecutor, the county, the civil side of the county attorney, the public defender, all of the things that y'all expect from your county government, the biggest piece of revenue that we have to run those operations is property taxes. And that is just roughly half, just shy of half. The other, the next largest piece is departmental revenues, and that would be just fees for things like, I don't know, maybe others can help me out here, but, you know, license fees, you know, for your marriage license, I suppose, or your license plates, just all those type of fees that you pay. This slide is just kind of a high level. I'm going to go through the adopted budget. So we have the budget hearing on the first county board meeting of the fiscal year, and as I said, it goes July 1 through June 30. So the first county board meeting of this current fiscal year was July 9th. No meeting the prior week due to the holiday. The budget contained no assumed increase in the tax levy on assessed property values. The budget did assume a 6% increase in total county assessed property values. As we now know, as of August 20th, that was actually 7.46, not 6%, so a little bit higher than what we had anticipated. The total budget, $563.4 million, was 12.2% above last year's budget, driven primarily by healthcare operations and a, basically a $29 million increase in road project spending. That, those, that road spending, which was like 77 million or something in there like that, let me see, hold on, I think I have the exact number, 78 million. That is reimbursed by highway allocation funds, so that is not your property taxes. The next bullet down, general fund budget, that is operations. This is the piece that you would be concerned with as it relates to property taxes. So the budget for that is 278.3 million, which is 3.6% above last year's final modified budget. And the increase there is due to providing inmate medical care. Those costs increased, as well as cost to implement a new ERP system to replace our current computer system, which was installed 21 years ago, which in computer terms is very, very old, obviously. Increases in criminal justice costs and increases in facility operating costs with our Public Building Commission. So we did set the parameters for all of the departments across the county at 3% increase for salaries and 1.5% increase for all other expenses. And by and large, most departments were able to stay within those parameters. Had all departments been able to stay in those, we would have been at 3% or a little less, actually. There were a few, of course, that had to, that said, hey, we just can't, you know, stick to that for various reasons. You know, for example, I know, I'm not trying to pick on anybody, but for corrections, for example, they had to go out to bid this year. Their contract was, had expired for the inmate medical care, and those came in significantly higher than the prior provider, so they could not stay within the 1.5% increase. That was allotted for non-salary expenses. So anyway, in total, the property, the operations and general fund that are supported by all of our property tax dollars, that total budget increased by 3.6% above last year. And just as a point of reference, I just looked this up right before the meeting. According to the U.S. Joint Economic Committee, their September 2024 update, the CPI inflation rate for Nebraska, so very specific, for August was 3.4%. So we're very much in line with that. You know, I don't think we're too far out from where inflation is running. So finally, the hearing regarding the final tax rate will occur after the final valuation is certified on August 20th. And as I mentioned, the actual hearing for that final tax rate will be next Tuesday at the board meeting. That is all I have, and looking forward to any comments after the rest of the panel is done. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Lori. Next up is Millard Public Schools.
I'm Chad Meiskir. I'm the Chief Financial Officer for Millard Public Schools. Also with me here tonight are Mike Kennedy from our Board of Education and Dr. Schwartz, our Superintendent. First of all, I'm going to go over the legally required points of view and then talk about the why, but from a legal point of view, first of all, we have to share what our name is, Millard Public Schools. Our property tax request that we are planning for next year is $182 million. The total assessed value from last year to this year is going up 7.87%. The property tax levy that would give the same amount of total revenue would be just under $1.02, and we are proposing a levy next year of $1.11.801. And you can see the breakout there with the general fund, bond fund, and the building Based on our situation, as the previous speaker said, inflation right now is about 3.5%. Our budget proposal is a 1.49% spending increase for next year. If you have any questions, and I'm, I can jump back to this slide, or it's available out there as well, I encourage you to contact me directly if you have any questions or concerns, because sometimes this hearing can be a little tough to go through all the details, so please don't hesitate to reach out. So now, that's the legally required. Other context, you can see the history of the levy there. We used to be at $1.22, $1.25. We're currently at $1.98 with a proposed about 2 cent increase for next year. Couple other things I think are important for context is, of the 244 school districts in Nebraska, Millard Public Schools has the lowest spending per pupil in the state. You can see there, the state average is about 16,000 per student, where Millard is about 12,000. Those are numbers from the Department of Education. Those aren't my numbers. They're something that we pull from the state website just to check where we stand compared to other districts. And as you can see there, we do have authority to do more under applicable Nebraska law, but we recognize that we don't need it. We can hold to a 1.49% budget increase. So how did we get there that a 1.49 results in more than 2% in tax asking? Well, the real problem that Millard Public Schools have, and a lot of equalized schools, is the loss of state aid. We are losing over $11 million in state aid next year. So that's why the burden shifts. Even at a relatively low spending increase, the burden shifts to the property taxpayer. And again, I can walk through the details of the how state aid works if any of you want to contact me after the meeting, but with a 10-minute limit, it would take me a lot longer to get there. I would also like to point out that we did cut about $9 million from our continuation budget to get down to a 1.49% budget increase, primarily at the elementary level, where we've got some enrollments that we think we could cut some staff and still provide a quality service. And the last point is, every year, local taxpayer advocacy group, Taxpayers for Freedom, comes in, and we open our budget to them because they're a good sounding board for us of, are we being adequately fiscally conservative and being adequately respectful of the taxpayer? And this year, Nebraska Taxpayers for Freedom reviewed our budget and gave it a grade of A for fiscal conservatism. I think that's all that I have. Look forward to your comments tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Chad. Next up is City of Bennington.
I'm Mayor Zach Johns, and I'm with the City of Bennington, here to present to you our 2024-2025 tax budget requests. Our 2425 budget request, our city levy is 58.29 cents. That is down 3.5 cents from 2324, and is a reduction of 5.7% overall. Additionally, I'd like to give you a little bit of history about the tax levies over the last few years. If you go back to 2022-2023, our tax levy was 66.8 cents, and in 2021-2022 season, it was 71.8 cents. So we've been continuously reducing our tax levy, being conscious of that with the City of Bennington. Each of the last three years, we've reduced, and it has been a total of 18.8% since 2021. Our 2024 valuations, $234 million, $18,535. If we went with a zero growth rate in the budget, which we are allowed a 3.3% allowable growth for the City of Bennington, 0% would be 52.396 cent levy. As you can see, you're all aware that we've been fighting inflation for quite a few years now, rapid inflation, very high. We are up against 2.9% inflation from July of '23 to July of '24. Even in those periods, we've continued to reduce our tax levy. Our proposed budget for 2023-24 was $1,446,235, and for 2425, we are requesting $1,609,552. That is an increase of 11.3%, so it is above the 3.3% of allowable growth rate. The additional growth rate is needed because we are in a place where we're fighting rapid inflation. We're fighting inflation in all sectors of our city management, and also, we are undergoing large capital projects at this time. Many of those projects are actually being funded by state and federal grants and community fundraising efforts, but we do need cash on hand to stay liquid to be able to pay bills before we are reimbursed by those other entities and other means of financing our projects. So that's a part of the reason is why we were not able to go as low as we had possibly So as you can see, our property tax requests are 2425, $163,000 over what we had budgeted for in '23 and '24. So 2% allowable growth rate allowed by the state would be $28,925. And another allowable growth rate for the net growth in Bennington of 1.3% would be $18,801. So dollars over state allowable increase would be of 3.3% would be $115,591. So where's that extra spending going? As I mentioned before, we have capital projects that we need to stay liquid for at the time. We need to be able to pay those bills as they come in before we receive reimbursements. We are all, one of those projects is New Meyer Farm. It's going to be a great enhancement for the community of Bennington. We are also in the process of building a new public works facility so that we can house more equipment to keep up with the growth in the community, such as the growth and expansion in New Meyer Farm. And they are going to be essential to the community and necessary for our continued success and growth. That is all I have for you guys today, and I hope that you all feel pleased with that, and I look forward to your comments.
Thank you, Mayor Johns. Next up is Bennington Public Schools.
My name is Aaron Plaz. I'm the Superintendent at Bennington Public Schools. Appreciate the opportunity to be here tonight and tell a little bit about our story. Going to start with the kind of bare bones requirement like many others have. Our property tax request at Bennington Public Schools for this year is $38,469,191. Our total assessed valuation from last year to this year increased by 10.02%. If we kept the same rate as last year, our levy would be $1.23.42 cents per $100 of assessed valuation. We are proposing that our levy remains stable at $1.35.8 cents per $100 of assessed valuation. Based on the proposed property tax request and changes in other revenues, our general operating budget for this year will decrease by 2.19%. And as with the others, if you want any additional information, please don't hesitate to reach out with my phone number, email there on the presentation. Want to begin, just talk a little bit about all the different limits that we have within school systems. Each year, we have a little, a few more that seem to come on, and so just in, to be transparent, I wanted to show how we are operating within each of those caps or limits that we have. Our general fund and special building fund limit within school districts is $1.05, and we are proposing that to be at $1. Each year, our budget authority minus special education and a few allowances increases by 2.5%. And so that limit is $46,883,586, which we are right at. The cash reserve limit for a school district of our size is 25% of expenditures, and so we could be just over $13.7 million. We have $13.6 million on hand. And then the fourth one is a cap on the amount of revenue that a school district can have per year. That is 3% plus additional for growth or certain students you have or demographics within your school system. Under that, we would be able to levy for just over $32.2 million, and we are proposing $28.3 million this year. You can't really begin any story at Bennington without talking about the growth first, and so I'd like to start with that. Bennington is one of the fastest-growing school districts in the state of Nebraska. In the last 10 years, we have over-doubled our enrollment each year. As of right now, we're still, we're estimating that we will have 5,000 K through 12 students by '28-'29, where we're currently at about 4,300. And our full build-out, so you're looking, you know, 15, 20, 30 years from now, anticipation for the school district is it will be between 12,000 and 15,000 students. Looking at our property tax requests from the previous year to this year, you'll notice that, going to the final total first, that our total property tax request went up to 10.02%, which was the valuation increase. But we did have some changes within our taxable funds. Our general fund levy went from 95.2 cents up to 98.2 cents, an increase of 3 cents. Our bond fund went up 1.8 cents. That is coming from our QC Puff Fund, where those were used to help pay down bonds. We were able to pay a bond off early out of the QC Puff Fund, allowing that 1.8 cents to move into the bond fund. And then the third one there is our special building fund, which was at 4.8 cents last year, and now is at 1.8 cents. So you can see the 3 cents from the special building fund moved into the general fund to try to help with our budget shortfall, which we'll talk about here in a minute. This would limit our ability to help with capital projects into the future, but we've got to do that just in order to make our operations work for next year. If you look at a little bit of the history of our tax levy within the school district, we are at the lowest levy that we've been in for 12 years. Some of that was due to the additional special education funding that came in last year, which we immediately gave back to the taxpayer. We are going to be keeping the levy at the same as this year as the previous year. So I just want to talk a little bit more about our general fund revenue and how it's worked. That's where our whole story starts this year, is with our revenue. Like some others, maybe that talked ahead of us, our state aid is going down $5.4 million. $5.4 million. Last year, our total revenue was $54 million, so just right at 10% of our total revenue is being reduced by our state aid this year. And so with that, the way that, and I'm going to go a little bit more in-depth on how the school funding formula works, but our only way to make up that lost revenue from the state is through, unfortunately, a local effort, which is our property taxes. So if you look in the top left, our equalization aid has gone down $5.4 million. The fourth bullet down's our local effort that went up $3.4 million. The bottom right is our total revenue for our general fund. That's our operations. That's how we're going to keep the lights on, how we're going to pay staff, all the things that it takes to run a school district. Our total revenue is going down just under $1.6 million this year, which means that we will have 2.91% less funds this year than we had the previous year, despite growing 3% student population. Where our revenue's going down. I wanted to also, if you could look to the top right graph, you'll see the orange line. That is the percentage of state aid as a percent of our, our full budget. And so over the last several years, the state, you know, somewhere between 35% to 42% of our total revenue came from state aid. Next year, it's going to be just over 25%. So as that state aid continues to drop, local effort increases. To try to put that in a visual format, we created this, this visual that we have here. So each of these cups, each year the NDE comes out and they do a needs assessment. So through the TOSA model, they determine with the number of students that you have, the demographics that you have, in order to operate, you need X amount of dollars. And so that would be the size of the cup in this graphic. Then through there, they look at your resources. The first thing that fills up the cup is your other revenues. This would be motor vehicle, other types of local resources that we receive. That would be represented with the green within the cup. Once that's done, they look at your local effort rate. Local effort rate is the assumption that a school district would tax at $1 per hundred dollars of valuation. Once that's done, that fills up the blue portion of the cup. If you have any room left in your cup, they pour the red part, which would be your equalization aid. And so if you look last year, the, the green was about 22% of our other revenues. Our $1.35 or our $1 in our general fund and special building fund accounted for 41% of, of the total, followed by the state aid of 36.44. Last year, we had a valuation increase of 21%, which is huge and almost unheard of. This year, because of that, our blue portion or our property taxes account for 20, or 51% of our total cup. Thus, the state has less that they're going to put in on the back end at 27%. So you can see where the $5.4 million of reduction from state aid comes and where the 3.4 million additional property taxes come from within our local effort rate. So knowing that our revenue situation was going to be what it is for this year, we look to tighten our belts within the school system and figure out how we can make this work even with our rapid growth. Last year, we were able to reduce our total operating budget by 5.77%. This year, we are reducing our total operating budget by 2.19% with a 4% addition in the general fund, 6% addition in the bond fund. But we reduced our special building fund by almost 10% and then our QC puff fund by about 85%. And so, you know, we had to put most of our resources into our general fund to operate based on the large reduction that we had this year. All fund, all fund expenditures for this year, $93,263,993. Looking ahead for our school district, we are anticipating our state aid next year drops another $2.2 million with the assumption of a 10% valuation increase this year. Our blue portion will expand next year, the red portion will reduce and we anticipate another loss of $2.2 million. We do our budget over a three-year period. That way we can try to forecast the swings each way. Right now, we're showing a budget surplus of $165,000 or .1% over a three-year period. So we're balancing it out over, over a three-year period. Thank you all for being here tonight. Looking forward to all of the comments. There is a website as well on this slide that has all of this financial information, the slideshow and everything that you'd want to know about Bennington Public Schools budget. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dr. Plaz. Next up is the City of Ralston.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Rick Hoppy. I am the City Administrator for the City of Ralston. Also wanted to let you know that our mayor is here, Don Grosser, and our Finance Director, Tim Bowling is over here, if you want to harass him as well. Thanks for coming out tonight. First question, anyone here from Ralston? All right, we got one person I can talk to. So I'll try to make it fast for the rest of you. I know you feel like you've seen this slide before. It's because I'm cheating off Mayor Zach's homework, so forgive me for that. Our levy last year was 66.7 cents and the levy this year will be the same amount. We have been trying to reduce the levy a penny or two a year at the direction of our mayor and city council. We felt like a long, slow reduction would be the best effort to keep our property tax rate as low as possible while still meeting the needs of our community. We were not able to do that this year and I'll explain why in just a second. Okay, I think it's important to note when you take this in context to what the state law says about why we're here. State law essentially says that if we take in 2.2% more property tax dollars than last year, we have to come and talk with all of you and kind of explain what our reasoning was and what's our thinking. There's inflationary growth of 2% you get and our new growth this year was, was much, much lower than it has been in the past, about 2.2%. I think that's in large part because a lot of people in Ralston got reevaluated over the last two years and had some pretty good sized increases. So 2.2% is the number to take away from, from this part of the slide. So what was our property tax budget increase? It was 3.1% if you juxtapose that against the 2.2. So in the previous year, we had spent or collected about $3.85 million in property tax dollars and that has gone up to $3.97 million in this proposed budget, which is a difference of about $120,000 total from the two amounts. Much like Mayor Zach did, we tried to break it down a little bit to you so you could kind of understand the difference between that 3.1 and that 2.2. And that figures $34,000, just a little under a percent more than state law is saying would allow us to avoid this meeting. So the natural question is, you know, Ralston, what did you do with the $34,000 and why didn't you go down a little bit further? Probably don't have enough time to explain all the thinking that went into our budget, but let me tell you about two things that really did play a role and one of them is universal to virtually everyone else in the room. First off, police officers and their salaries, their, their labor costs are about half of our labor budget in the City of Ralston. And honestly, our officers are underpaid. They ask to do the same kind of work that the other metro police forces do. You know, Omaha, the Omaha metro is a busy community. Because our wages weren't necessarily competitive with those of other departments, we've had trouble getting recruits to fill positions. We used to get dozens of applications for an open position. This last time around, we got three or four. It's clearly an issue that we're not paying our officers enough. So the new three-year contract we just negotiated is about 5% a year and salary increases over each of the three years. That's a fairly significant hit to a small community like ours and one of the reasons that we were a little loathe to go down with our intended plan of dropping the levy a little bit at a time. I think the other big thing that really drove a lot of the decision-making is uncertainty at the legislature. I think everyone in this room is probably aware the legislature did make some changes to how state law interacts with property taxes over the special session. They're not done. There's a lot more to come in the next session for sure, including some discussion about whether cities get to keep all of their sales tax. So with the uncertainty that we are facing on both those revenue sources, which is about 80% of our revenues, we thought we'd play a little more conservative this year and try to resume next year our intended plan of dropping the levy a little bit every year to try to get it down and be as competitive as we can be. The slide that we really want to point out here by state law is what would happen if you had 0% growth in the number of dollars you take in? So in that middle box, you see the 3.85 million from last year. You see the $595 million valuation that we have for this year and you obviously apply that against a levy rate. And that levy rate, if you try to keep the dollars at 3.85 million, would be 64.7 or a couple pennies below where we're at now. And I did leave my name and number and email up here if you want some more information or just want some more detail on the Ralston budget. There are a mess of handouts out there. Thanks to the folks that run this show. Thank you very much for your time and appreciate you being here. Thank you.
Thank you, Rick. All right, and last up is Ralston Public Schools.
Good evening. I'm Jason Buckingham, Superintendent of Ralston Public Schools. And since we did not see a whole lot of you from Ralston, I'll keep it pretty brief here as we go through. Comparison up on the board of our levy from last year compared to this year. You can see we had an increase in our general fund. School districts, for the most part, like most government entities, the bulk of our budget is in our personnel. We've all experienced inflation. We know how, how much that has reduced our buying power and our ability to go out and purchase the same things we did a year ago. We're committed to our staff. We wanted to have an increase that at least kept pace with inflation. So as a result of that, most of what you see in the general fund area is an increase in our people. So whether that's paraprofessionals or teachers or custodians, bus drivers, everyone that works for our district got some sort of raise. We also saw increases in health insurance this year. Those are things we're committed to contractually in some instances, so we had those increases as well. We also had, another thing is a little bit unique in timing. We had federal dollars coming in in the form of ESRS funds. That money has since stopped. We had a couple of staff members that we added as a part of ESRS and now we've got to absorb that into our general fund. So all told, we're not adding a whole lot of stuff in there other than paying for the cost of increase that we have for our staffing at Ralston. Couple of other things of note as you look. If we look at the bond fund specifically, that's really the biggest story for us and one of the major reasons why we're here tonight. We sold a bond or, or we had a bond that was passed several years ago. We took out just the first half of it in a draw and we kept the other half unsold because we wanted to save those interest costs that we had for our patrons. The second half of it is now going on. That's why you see the large increase from 3.9 million up to 5.6 million. So if you get to the bottom line with it, if you look at the total, we had an increase of right around 2.8 million and about 6 cent on our levy. That 6 cent on the levy almost entirely comes from that second bond being, being a part of that. So if we look then at our levy history overall and we look to the bottom line on that, you can see that if we go to the far right-hand column bottom, we're at $1.19 proposed for next year. If you look historically over the course of the last 26 years, this is the third lowest levy that we've had over the course of the last 26. Would we have liked to have held the line and kept the levy the same amount? We would have, but just with our bond financing, that was something that just wasn't possible for our board. So finally then, in summary, our valuations did increase by almost 5%. We're up to $2.4 billion. Our general fund levies proposed at 91.12 cent and voluntary SEP at .0099, special building fund on there. So our total levy then for '24-25 is $19.32. The tax rate, which would levy the same amount of property taxes last year when multiplied with the new valuation, would have been at $1.7. But as we just reviewed, a good portion of that increase that we've had in our tax rate is directly related to our second bond going up for payment. So that represents an increase of 6.6 cent. If we look at our bond increase overall, that was 6.2 cent. So you can see then the lion's share of our increase in, in our levy was directly related to our bond financing. So with that, we had an increase overall, general fund budget of about 3.62%. Vast majority of that all sat in the increased costs of personnel that we had in our general fund. So with that, if you have questions individually for me, I'll stay around here a little bit after the hearing's over. Also, if you grabbed one of our handouts on there, my contact information's on there as well. So, thank you.
All right, thank you, Jason. All right, so we're going to get the podium rotated around so it's facing the dais for the public comment period. But while that's being done, I'll just go over a few things. So I'll call names forward by the order in which they are listed on the sign-in sheet. As stated earlier, when you were signing in, there was a box to check if you wanted to speak. If you did not do that but want to speak, just let Chief Deputy County Clerk Sandy Conley know over here in the red. So I'll call a name up and then I'll announce who is next in line. So everyone will get two minutes to speak. There is a timer. When you're up there, it'll be to the right of the computer screen. And when you see the yellow light come on, come, when you see the yellow light come on, that means you have 30 seconds left. I don't mean to be rude or harsh, but we just, we have to stick to the two minutes because there are many people that wish to speak and I want to make sure we, everyone gets an opportunity to speak. If I announce anyone's names, names, anyone's name wrong, I do apologize. Please just correct me when you get up to the, to the podium. But even if I pronounce your name correctly, I still have to have you state your name for the record and the statute, and then also state if you're representing an organization, state that as well. The statutes that govern this hearing also say that any speaker must provide their address. However, that statute also says the address requirement can be waived to protect the security of the individual in the name of any organization represented by such individual. So if you don't feel comfortable giving your address, just, you can just state that you're waiving your, your address requirement. So I'll just go over it again. When you get to the podium, state your name. If you're representing any organization, state that. And then you state your address or let us know that you're waiving your address requirement. And once you get through that part, then we'll start the, the two-minute timer. If you have any written remarks and you want to submit them, please provide them to the Chief Deputy County Clerk and we'll make sure they get provided to the proper political subdivisions. And last thing, just reminder, there won't be any back and forth discussion between those at the podium and the representatives at, at the dais. It's just an opportunity to provide comments to the representatives here tonight. So with that, I will get started with the public comment period. And first up is Dale Bentley, Dale Bentley followed by Patricia Coop. Is Dale Bentley here? All right, I'll move on. How about Patricia Coop? Okay. Next up, Robert Armbrust. Nope, okay. Mike Adams. And then after that is Sammy Smith.
Oh, no worries. Appreciate it. Hello again, my name's Mike Adams. I live at 5418 Reynolds Street in Raven Oaks. I wasn't able to come last time to talk about increasing taxes and I know that's not the time right now to do that. But I do ask the representatives in Douglas County to let us be able to speak freely a little more available with these situations. I know that last time we received the letter, we had a weak notification and we would love, again, next time to be able to speak about our home. Home's not just a, just a place we live. It's actually a place of memories for my family particularly. With these increasing taxes, and we understand that these taxes provide services for us, for the community and everything, but this home is very important to me for, one, for family memories. It was my grandparents' home and it was a wish for my family and 45 cousins that all have spent many wonderful years in our home bonding and experiencing many things that these increases have hurt the ability to not only improve the home, but to make it a place to where we can still bond over our family. But thank you so much, representatives, and hope to speak to you next time to talk about our tax evaluations.
Thank you. Next up is Sammy Smith, followed by Jerry Pascal.
Good evening. My name is Sammy Smith and I live at 6710 Heimball Avenue in Douglas County. And I noted that mostly your, your tax increase are going toward the schools and paying bonds and whatnot. My, my question is, why can't some of that revenue, since the tax on it, of being the increased tax? We got sister, I'm calling them sister, sister wheel and lost her husband down the street. Their sidewalk is all crumpled up and everything and she can't get it fixed. So you come out and say, you got to fix the sidewalk. If not, we'll fix it and we'll charge you. How come that can't be fixed free of charge for that individual and no charge since they're paying the high taxes on that property? That's my question. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Jerry Pascal. And then followed by Joshua Thompson.
Yes, my name is Jerry Pascal. At 13516 Hillsborough Drive in Omaha. I'm representing Nebraska Tax Bears for Freedom, but I'm speaking for myself. First of all, I want to compliment Miller Schools. Over the years, they've done a good job. They have a lot of representatives here, more than anybody else represented. And they've always listened to the Nebraska Tax Bears for Freedom with a good attitude. I wish all the taxing entities would have such a good attitude and work as a, work as a joint thing. That would be nice. I'm kind of disappointed in the talks of these levies so much that they throw out the levies aren't increasing, levies aren't increasing. It's misleading when, when a taxing entity sells their tax levies not going up without mentioning the property tax values. It's a combination of the two that matters and the total budget that matters. So what I want to know in simple language in, in the future is, from all the taxing entities is, what's your total budget proposed this year versus your total budget you spent last year? Those two, one divided by the other is the percentage increase. Simple thing. It appears to me that Douglas County has a 7.4% increase based on two different numbers I've calculated. I've calculated, and it wasn't that apparent in the way it was presented to me, so I'm disappointed in that. My concerns are, I'm a tax watchdog for 30 years, off and on, and the concern I have as board members, your customer is, for your revenues, is your, is the taxpayer. I can afford my taxes luckily, but many, many people are really stretched. Their, their homeowners insurance have gone up more than, way more than inflation, way, the inflation rate, way more, and so holding onto their house is getting difficult for many people. So to me, common sense says, wouldn't the professional thing to do as a board member is to try to reduce your budget?
You're at times, if you could just wrap it up.
Okay.
Thank you.
So my final thing is, corporations have had to reduce their budget, maybe get rid of people at times, as do households. I think it's time government do the same. Thank you.
Appreciate it. Thank you. Okay, next up is Joshua Thompson, followed by Sophia Mangata.
Thank you for the time. My name's Joshua Thompson. I live in Millard, so I'll keep my comments mostly related there, but I appreciate the gentleman's comments before me, and I personally don't need the MBA that I earned from UNO to know the difference between the school requests and the city and the county requests here tonight. There are very clearly some different priorities. Not once did I hear any of the proposed reasons for the city or county increases to be related to better health for our citizens, improved general fund going to our schools. I just hear us padding private prison profits instead because their healthcare costs went up? It just seems odd to me. You know, I, I think the gentleman made an excellent comment around the keeping the rate versus the evaluation of the properties. I don't know who's seen 7% increases year-over-year. Mine's 19%. My taxes on an annual basis are up over 33% over the last five years, and that's really hard for our family budget when that kind of thing comes in. So I would ask that the council consider appropriate maximum limits, not on the rates that can be incurred by the citizens, but on the actual dollars that come out of their household budget on a year-over-year basis. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. And real quick, I misspoke earlier, the, the yellow light goes off with a minute left, so not 30 seconds. I apologize about that. Okay, Sophia Mangata? It looks like M-A-N-G-U-A-T-A. Sophia? All righty. Walt Kocher? Walt, then it looks like K-O-C-H-E-R? All righty. Jake, or excuse me, Jack Buckley? Jack Buckley?
That's me, but I have nothing to say.
Okay, thank you, sir. Jonathan Green? Doug? Looks like Bayless?
Boyce.
Oh, there we go. Sorry about that. And after that, if there's a Guillermo Espinoza here, you'll be next.
My name is Doug Boyce, and I'm in Millard. I have a daughter that graduated from Bennington and a daughter that graduated from Millard West. We purchased land in 90s, in 97. We were usurped and annexed by the city. Our taxes doubled. In the last four years, we have gone up 40% in our tax rate. What I saw tonight, I think is shameful. It's a lot of smoke and mirrors. You guys talk about your, your budgets going up, but you don't consider the fact that our property tax evaluations are going up through the roof and not taking the total amount down. And I don't believe that there's any consideration for the bleeding that's going on with the taxpayers. I've run businesses. I've been responsible for staffs of 150 and 350 people. I know what revenue is. Revenue is not taxation. You guys all talk about it like it's, you're producing something, you're not. You're just taking it from the people that are bleeding to death, and at some point, it's got to come to a stop. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. Guillermo Espinoza? Guillermo? All righty. Ayesha McKinney? Ayesha McKinney? Okay. Cheryl Bowles? Cheryl Bowles? Sherman Wells? Sherman Wells? All right. Okay. Frank, same last name, I'm assuming not here either? Okay. Looks like Hayes?
Houssie.
Houssie? Yes, that's, that'd be, I'm sure that's it. Thank you. And Chad Hall, after, after her.
My name is Patricia Houssie. I live at 8713 Nicholas Street, and I've been very proud to live there. My father had built all those houses in that neighborhood since 1958. I've been retired for a few years, and my husband and I moved back to the neighborhood. My mother was there, and she passed away, and, and just recently, my husband passed away in February. And so I only have my own retirement income coming in, and I only make $2,100, $21,000 a year now. And most of the people in my block, out of the 10 houses, there's eight of us that are senior citizens that live on my streets, and they're all complaining about the tax increase in the neighborhood. Now recently, five years ago, or four years ago, we just had our street paved, and it's been really nice to have a paved street. It's all been dirt or blacktopped, but it's, and that is another payment that we have to endure to make every year during our tax time. So it's 500 and some dollars besides the taxes we have to make. So I want you to think about the senior citizens in the District 66 time. You know, we, we may not have the ability to grow the area because we don't have the properties.
Oh, sorry, we can, Patricia, sorry, you're at time, but you can, you can finish up, though.
We don't have the properties to grow and build new houses and to extend the monies to, like, out in those areas. So I just want to say thank you for thinking about senior citizens and, and that maybe you would think about lowering our taxes. Thank you so much.
Thank you, and I'm sorry for your loss. Chad Hall? And then Jeff Lyons after that?
Hello, I'm Chad Hall, 13405 Lillian Street. You're all probably wondering, where in the heck is that? That's in Sarpy County. Yeah, so I'm getting taxed by Douglas County entities. I'm not too happy about that. Anyway, let's see here. I'll try to write down some notes here. Sorry, I'm getting nowhere with answers about that, why I'm being taxed in Sarpy County for a Douglas County entity. I hear about all of these, you know, talking about fees and taxes, and hey, this is coming from this, this is coming from that. Well, it all boils down to taxes are you taking from us. So I don't, it doesn't matter how you slice it, that's just what it is. And we're getting kind of tired. Sales tax, motor vehicle tax, whatever tax, it's you taking from us. Inflation's hitting all of us hard. We've had to tighten, I've had to tighten my belt, other companies have had to tighten their belt. So I suggest you do the same. Is anybody here from?
Can we, please pause this time real quick. Folks, if we could keep conversation in the audience down so the speaker can be heard better, thank you, and we can start his time again. Sorry about that, Chad.
No worries, no worries. No, just anybody from Sarpy County or any state, any state representation, any, you know, why aren't we seeing those people here? Because this would be a good opportunity for them to come here. I've tried to go through the BOE, Board of Equalization process, and all I can say is, that is a dead-end street, and you can't spell boondoggle without BOE, so. And my suggestion is just say 1% max, year-over-year, call it good. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Okay, Jeff Lyons? And then Nicole, looks like Schmidt, after that?
My name's Jeff Lyons, I'll waive the address part. My family and I moved here, I think, 2018, so we've been here about six years. Moved here from Arizona. We were shocked when we found out that property tax rates were double what the, what we experienced in Arizona. I agree with the gentleman who spoke earlier, I'd like to echo his comments. What we saw here tonight was a lot of smoke and mirrors. It was just a lot of trying to justify your budget when your budget should be significantly decreased. Millard Public Schools budget at 188 million, or 182 million, is nearly Douglas County's entire budget, and then you're talking about a 1.5% tax increase. What that equals to, me though, is a 29% tax increase to Douglas County and a 31% tax increase to Millard Public Schools. And I, I don't have any children who even go to Millard Public Schools. That's an increase from $3,000 for the 2023 to 2024 tax year to over $4,000 just going to OPS and MPS. And that's not even taken into account $85 a month increase in my, my mortgage payment because the insurance cost goes up. So this, the increase that's being talked about is not a 1.5% increase to the taxpayer because that's the only source of funding that you have as taxpayers. You're not running a business, you're supposed to be running a public service. I'm not feeling a 33% increase in public services, I'm feeling a 33% increase in tax rates and mortgage rates. What needs to happen is your budgets need to be significantly decreased based on the state of the economy, not increased year-over-year just because you can.
All right, thank you. Nicole Schmidt? Nicole Schmidt? All right. Craig Holt? Craig Holt? Sean Kelly? Followed by Matt Wilburn?
My name's Sean Kelly, 5212 Underwood Avenue. My comment and request is directed at Douglas County. So as in the presentation, it said that the budget for next year was adopted on July 9th. It was also referenced that the valuation came in about $1 billion higher than what was estimated when that budget was put in place. That equates to roughly about $2.7 million in additional tax dollars that come in. So my ask is to, is to really just lower the mill levy rate at a minimum to equate to the same amount of tax dollars that were proposed with the original budget. I think my math is correct, it's roughly around 4 tenths of a, of a penny. That'd be my request. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Matt Wilburn? And then followed by Jacob Dingman.
My name's Matt Wilburn. I'm at 6825 165th Avenue. So first, I wanted to address the Douglas County. You made a comment that you had a proposed budget trying to stick to 3% increase, and there was a department that couldn't stick to that, and that was a valid reason to suddenly change the budget. There, there are expenses I have in my home that go up by more than 3%, and if I were to go to my employer and say, hey, these expenses have gone up, I just, I can't stick to my salary, you got to pay me more, it doesn't fly. It's, that's not how it works. My employer would say, this is what I hired you at, this is what we're paying you, unless I've done something to increase what I'm giving to that employer. And currently, I'm not seeing that increase. Bennington talked about how with their funds, as they get more property taxes, the state takes away funds from them. So why increase the levy? If by increasing the levy, you just lose state dollars, why are you charging your residents more when they're already paying it through the state as well, and now the state's just taking the money that they're taking from them and giving it somewhere else? Why are we doing that? I'm in the Millard Public School area. They failed my kids on multiple occasions. We homeschool now. It's been a sad failure to watch that happen. I never dreamed of becoming a homeschool parent. It's hard. It's a lot of hard work, but my kids, they're thriving now. So when you talk about how the evaluation has gone up by 7.8%, but you still have to increase the levy, I'm sorry, my income hasn't gone up by 7.8%. I just can't do that. So I want you to think about that before you go increasing the levy. The rest of us don't have that, that freedom. Thanks.
Thank you. Jacob Dingman, followed by James Dillard.
I'm Jacob Dingman, 14936 G Street, Omaha, Nebraska. Yeah, I just, I just got this in the, in the mail, and I was like, oh, wow, here we go, another increase. But I agree with what everybody else says, the assessed values have already gotten up, so why do you need to increase the taxes? Because you're already getting increased revenue. But what I'm excited to see is when the casinos open up and what kind of money that brings into our state to help levy off the taxes that we're paying to you guys. That's one thing I'd like to see. The other thing I've seen, a lot of other states have gone to legalization of marijuana and using those taxes to help bolster what's going on inside of it. So instead of coming up here and throwing problems at you guys, more problems at you guys, let's, let's start talking about some solutions, some things that are going to bring in more revenue. That casino that's opening in Bellevue, that, that's going to be a big help for Sarpy County. But what have we got here? We got Horstmann's Park, right? So that, those are just some positive things I'm looking forward to in the future, but I do not agree with this tax evaluation, and if you continue to raise taxes, then I will ask all of the state of Nebraska to stop paying their property taxes, then what are you going to do? Just like the man said, you are our employees. Remember that. We pay you. Thank you.
Thank you. James Dillard? James Dillard.
Yes.
Oh, hi.
James Dillard, 4938 North 15th Street. Yes, uh, been dealing with a lot of ta- freaking property value increases quite often to their little game to figure out how to, uh, increase property taxes without going through the legislature. And don't know why we have to increase property taxes on additional debt. And plus, my salary does not increase. But my burden with taxes does. Along with my burden of, uh, keeping my properties kept up. And also buying food and gasoline, all that. Well, what's the point? Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, next up, Jack McMahon. Jack McMahon. All right. Pablo Ramirez. Pablo Ramirez. Andy Ruse, R-E-U-S-S. Alrighty. And then after him is, uh, Ben Yosef.
I am Andy Ruse. This is not Andy Ruse. This is my daughter Vera. We live at 1410 South 218th Street. And, uh, I'm here to share two facts with you all, our beloved public officials. First, dozens of studies this year have found that the majority of Americans, including all of us here, do not have enough money saved to cover emergency expenses of more than a few hundred dollars. It's a stark reminder of just how important every single dollar is in each of our paychecks. But based on the proposed tax increases being considered here tonight and over the last few weeks, it looks like our public officials don't experience that same struggle. Now, I joke, I understand that you all have the same budgets that we do personally. And you represent other people who've made these decisions. This is not just you all. I understand that. And of course, I'd never begrudge anyone for achieving financial success. But while even a couple dozen dollars or a few hundred dollars per year in additional, uh, property taxes per household might not be a big deal to some of you. For the rest of us, it can make the difference between repairing a broken car, buying coats for our kids this winter, or even put, even putting food on the table. Second fact, more than 80% of Americans today say that in this election, their most important issue is the economy. The news is flooded with stories focused on immigration, presidential assassinations, or World War III. Yet Americans are still most worried about their pocketbooks, their savings accounts, if they own a business like my wife and I do, about our bottom line. So what does that mean? Voters are watching carefully what you all do here, what you do in the weeks ahead. Please do not spend more of our money. Do not raise our taxes. Even if it's through the smoke and mirrors that everyone has alluded to tonight. Reduce our taxes. Reduce your spending, please. Or be ready to face the consequences when we head to the ballot box.
Thank you. Ben Yosef. All right, Ben Yosef. All right. James Lawson. And then after that, Jay Overton.
Good evening. I'm James Lawson, uh, 8214 North 123rd, out in Northwest Omaha. I'm sure just about everybody here was about floored when they saw the, uh, attempted increase of the, um, property taxes yet again. Just to preface, I just moved into the state, transferred out here from Illinois. And, um, I thought I was coming to a better state. And just like the gentleman from Arizona, I was quite floored when I received my first property tax. It was quite of a whirlwind when we came into the state. It had to do a lot of quick decisions and I didn't really, you had a really hot, um, housing market at the time. And, uh, I didn't do my due diligence to check the tax, uh, rates in, not only in the county, in the state. I would have never moved here. I don't even think I would have moved into the state of Nebraska. I would have just moved into Iowa, maybe checked them out better. Something to think about. I know this area is experiencing tremendous growth. A lot of that could be probably taken in from impact fees. I work with a lot of businesses. There's, you have a lot of booming business and a lot of building going on right now. There's definitely other ways to, uh, take income in instead of putting it on the burden for the homeowner. I really strongly agree with the gentleman that said, you're going to have a lot of people that's not, they're not going to be able to pay their property taxes, first, second payments. And I just want you guys to all be prepared when that, when that day comes, when you start to experience more and more, because it's happening all over the country, not just in Nebraska, that different states, um, are, are seeing a high, high rate of people not being able to pay their property taxes. So I'm actually looking for tremendous decreases, especially when a very conservative, um, numbers have been put out there for inflationary rates. Most of my family has been dealing with anywhere from 20 to 50% rates of inflation across the board. Everything from-
James, you're at time, so if you just finish up, please.
I'll finish up, thank you. Everything from, uh, fuel, uh, to get to and from work, to provide for your families. I don't even have kids that are, uh, I have a six and a nine year old that I have in St. James in a Catholic school because I can't even deal with Omaha Public Schools right now. So just something to consider moving forward. I'm looking actually for a decrease. Thank you.
Thank you. Jay Overton.
Hello, uh, my name is Jay, James Overton, uh, property owner, businessman, serial entrepreneur in Omaha, Nebraska. At 3929 Ames Avenue, Omaha, Nebraska, 68111. What I see in this room is a mass consensus of actual people that are at least 30 years of age that actually have been long-term residents of not only Douglas County, City of Omaha, State of Nebraska. What you're not actually seeing is the youth, 30 and down. So 30 and down is actually looking at us from the perspective of the tax rates are too high for everything. From the actual cost of living is decent, don't get me wrong. But you're being taxed for motor vehicle tax. You're getting taxed for ridiculous sales tax, entertainment taxes, everything else that they see. So what you're going to do is you're going to alienate your younger actual people from actually staying in the state. I talk to them every day. They go to UNO, they go to Creighton, they come here, they get an education, and they leave. They don't stay. And now with you guys increasing these levies on everything that you're doing and actually going ahead and alienating this younger generation, there's no reason for them to stay. So right now, it may look fine and dandy because these people actually grown roots here. But the younger generation, they've got legs, they're going to walk, they're going to leave. So by doing all the things you're doing now, you're setting an actual trend in motion for them to actually go ahead and leave your state. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. Next up is Dorothy Johnson, followed by Larry Store.
Good evening. I am Dorothy Johnson. Um, I'm going to waive my address at this time. And what's your name?
Hi.
What's your name?
I'm Ava.
Excellent. This is Ava Johnson. Um, and we are first time homeowners. Um, I, in pandemic, unfortunately, I was experiencing some domestic violence in our home and I made the passionate decision to leave that home and journey out on my own. I lived in a very trendy downtown apartment for the last three years. But this year in April, I was able to own a home. So all of this stuff is new to me. But Jay is my, my mentor and my neighbor. And he said, be prepared to contest your property taxes. And I said, yes, sir. So a few things. For me, I have some homework to do to better understand what goes on here. I'm kind of confused as to why Omaha Public Schools isn't sitting where you all? Because my lovely children, they attend Washington Elementary School. So a little confused there. But this is about capital. It's also about representation. So it may seem like a little increase to you all. But for us, that's the difference in between Olive Garden or having oodles of noodles every night, right? So that's, it does matter. I believe my other thing is where I live is in a very affluent neighborhood, but we are still in 68111, which is a traditionally marginalized area. So I'm unsure as to what benefits my neighborhood is receiving based on these increases. We haven't, we aren't getting new paved roads where I'm at. Uh, we don't have new signs or new sidewalks. So I understand that these, this capital affects everyone. But where I live, I'm not seeing the benefit added back. Where's my return on investment, um, into these taxes? I'm just, I'm not seeing it and I'm not feeling it. I believe the other thing I wish to say is that representation, representation, rest of my set, representation. I am the only African-American female. I'm the VP of Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion at a national venture capital firm. And I want to reaffirm what Mr. Overton said, that, uh, what you are doing speaks loudly and it does push out new emerging and diverse talent. And so we may have the capital here in Nebraska. We may have the philanthropy culture to sustain ourselves. But for the longevity of our community, you're really boxing out a strong class of folks. And we will feel that.
Dorothy, you're at time, if you could finish up.
That's all right, that's all right. But in regards to diversity, um, when it comes to diversity by age or gender or race and culture, we'll need those people. And with what you're doing here, it definitely pushes us out. And it does push us across the river and to Kansas City and to Minnesota and Des Moines. And you may not prioritize our talent, but somebody will. You may not prioritize our budget, but someone will. Thank you.
Larry Store.
Larry Store, 5015 Lafayette Avenue, Omaha, 68132. I think there's some confusion here tonight. I'm confused. I got this card in the mail just days ago and it says, this is a tax increase. It does not say that this is a meeting of the various bodies throughout the whole city and county for a debate, I mean, a hearing. It doesn't even say we can have citizen comments. But I wonder how many people in this room had a good experience with their personal, uh, property tax, uh, hearing advisor? If they made the first one? Or if they missed the first one and went to the second one and had a good experience with that person? You have an opportunity to argue with them, but you don't have an opportunity to win. That was my experience two years in a row. I took my time driving three and four blocks on each side, four blocks. My neighborhood zone took pictures, wrote the addresses and looked them all up of houses very similar in size and construction from a street view. Because I can't knock on their door and measure their dimensions of their rooms and their house and ask them about improvements. I can't do that. I cannot argue with you, Dan, about that. I only have to accept what you say. If I challenge it, oh, what's the matter? You don't want to live in Dundee? No, I can't afford it. It's not that I don't want to live there. Just a few blocks east of me and all the way up to the top of the hill, across Saddle Creek Road, is an area that has been blighted and nothing has been done with it. You're obviously hoping it'll rot so far away that you can build new apartment buildings on it. My property taxes have done nothing to help you do fix up that neighborhood. At the top in Walnut Hill, about 40th.
Then Larry, you're at time, so please finish up.
There's an abandoned apartment building and other junk houses that you guys have not taken care of. My property tax, according to this, went up quite a bit. But you're saying $10 a year maybe is my tax increase. It doesn't say for all of you. It just says for my property tax.
Larry, you're at time.
Where's, where's the amount that each one of you has cost to me? And I get two minutes or less, three minutes or less? Taxpayers pay to get freedom of speech at their meetings. You work for us, we don't work for you. Don't take my time and money both.
Thank you, Larry. So I made it through the, uh, everyone who checked that they wanted to speak on the sign and sheet. But was there anybody else who wanted to address the, uh, representatives here? Perhaps I mispronounced your name or you just changed your mind that you would like to address the board? You can come forward and do so. And like I said, please state your name and then-
My name is Rochelle Hunt and I waive my right for my address. So I've been listening to everybody and I agree with many speakers here. And I feel like, um, you know, everybody made very good points. And, you know, everybody has to live on a budget here that you're draining from. And it's like you're just squeezing them and squeezing them until they can't squeeze anymore. And that's what's going to happen. Because you can only take so much before, um, you start seeing an increase in homelessness, before you start seeing increases in, um, just broken down properties and, um, and then where are you going to get your money from? And here's the other thing, it's like, okay, so the federal government is giving you money and you still can't seem to find a budget. But here's the thing, okay, um, why can't you go out and raise money? You, Boy Scouts do it. Girl Scouts do it. Why can't you go get money from people who actually have money? Why are you sucking dry people who don't have money? Or people who, who, um, have a little bit, but now you're taking what little they have to enjoy life to make them miserable and hate their lives? Why? Why do you feel the need to do that? That's not okay, that's not acceptable. It's not. And, um, you, you, I, I hope you are convicted tonight. Be convicted, you are, you are hurting people. Do you care that you're hurting people? Do you care about the suffering and the homelessness? Do you care? Start budgeting right. Start paying attention to your finances. And hey, if, if you don't have the money, then start cutting programs. Start cutting things. You're clearly not, you're clearly not looking into what really needs to be cut, what should be cut. I mean, you know, I, I get that you're getting funding from the equal, equalization thing. But I mean, you know, um, that critical race theory crap, nonsense. I'm sorry. But, um, you know, there, there's plenty of budgets that could be cut. And, um, I just don't think you're being creative enough in your efforts to find the solution without further, further burdening the people and the citizens of Omaha and Nebraska in the whole.
Would anyone else like to address representatives?
My name is Melissa Chlebski. I will waive my address, but I am a Sarpy County resident in the Millard Public Schools District. I do appreciate the fact that Millard has kept their levy rates low. However, due to the increases in property tax valuations, you know, that means you guys are getting more money. And I would have liked to see that kept the same, the amount of money that I had provided you last year. I would like it to be the same. I believe that there's probably room for, uh, cuts to be made, uh, in the Millard, uh, School District. You know, we've, we've, like, has been said here with, with other, uh, people in the audience here, we've had to tighten our, our belts, uh, on what we're spending our money on. I would like more information from Millard as to where are you cutting specifically? Yes, your, your increase, your, a lot of the money is going towards teachers. But we're not getting raises all the time, you know, on, on our side either. And so the teachers are getting raises as well. And that is all that I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to- Would anyone else like to speak? All right, well, with that, uh, that would conclude this joint public hearing. I appreciate everyone's time. And again, if you wanted hard copies, any of the presentations, uh, there may still be some on the front desk out there. So, uh, thank you very much for being here tonight.